Good evening. I'm Greg Longini, Secretary to the Board of the Chicago Transit Board. On October 21st of 2022, the CTA Board Office issued a notice of public hearing on the proposed 2023-2027 Capital Program of Projects, the 2023 Operating Budget and Program, and the Financial Plan for 2024. For the evening of November 10th at 6:00 PM, this notice was given that the Chicago Transit Authority Board desires public comment before it considers the ordinances to adopt the aforementioned programs and plans. There is currently in effect a statewide disaster declaration as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, which has been renewed from month to month since the start of the pandemic. Pursuant to Section 7E of the Open Meetings Act, virtual public meetings are permitted while the disaster proclamation remains in effect. As permitted by the section of the Open Meetings Act, the public hearing this evening will be held electronically or virtually for the members of the public. We are now about to begin the meeting, and I turn this over to Chairman Lester Barclay of the Chicago Transit Board.
Good evening. I am Lester Barclay, Chairman of the Chicago Transit Board. Welcome and thank you for participating in our annual public hearing on the CTA's proposed budget. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce the other board members who are present tonight: Reverend Bernard Jakes, Alejandro Silva, Reverend Johnny Miller, Rosa Ortiz, Michelle Lee, and Nema Ja. Also in attendance tonight is CTA President Dorville Carter and General Counsel Kent Ray. We will now begin the public hearing. Before we open the hearing up to hear from the public, we'll first have a brief presentation on the 2023 Proposed Budget by our Chief Financial Officer, Jeremy Fine. Jeremy?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Jeremy Fine, the CFO for CTA, and I'll give a brief outline of the 2023 budget. The highlights for the 2023 budget are provided on this page, and we're here to present a 2023 Operating Budget, which is $1.8 billion, including $390 million of federal relief funds. The COVID-19 pandemic continues to impact public transportation, and ridership continues to be below 2019 levels, but is expected to grow 9.3% compared to the 2022 forecast. Compared to 2019 levels, ridership is expected to grow from approximately 53% in 2022 to 58% in 2023. To offset the revenue shortfall, CTA received a total of $2.2 billion in federal relief funding, which is expected to last through 2025. Additional funding will be needed to close future budget gaps, though. The 2023 budget maintains full service along with continuing pass price reductions. The one, three, and seven-day passes will be fully integrated with PACE, and will be able to be used on either system for the same price as the current CTA-only pricing. We also implemented the Regional Connect Pass in 2022, allowing riders to use all three systems seamlessly. The CTA continues to deliver on the Meeting the Moment Action Plan to deliver reliable and consistent service, enhancing safety and security, improving the customer experience at our facilities, upgrading our digital tools to improve customer communication with our customers, and investing in our employees. On the next page, the 2023 Operating Budget is fiscally prudent, and operating revenue is expected to increase to... expected to increase $146 million, while expenses are increasing approximately $81 million. The expense increases are well below the current inflation rate, and the CTA is expected to carry over $1.2 billion of federal relief funds into 2023. And these funds are again expected to last through 2025. On the next page, there's an overview of the 2023 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program. Our five-year CIP invests $3.4 billion in making major investments throughout the system. The funding sources supporting the CIP include federal formula funds, federal discretionary, state pay-go, and CTA bond funds. The proposed five-year CIP recommends funding for a variety of capital improvement projects and initiatives, which include the Red Line Extension, All Stations Accessibility Program, Bus and Rail Fleet Modernization, and beginning the transition to electrification of bus routes, which includes buses and charging infrastructure. The CTA will also seek additional FTA discretionary funding awards going forward, including the New Starts Program for RLE, low-no emissions and bus facilities for the conversion to bus electrification, and the ASAP funding to make facilities accessible. Thank you for your time, and that concludes my remarks, and I'll turn it back over to Greg.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Before we begin calling on the speakers, I just want to go over a few of the rules for tonight. We're asking each speaker to try to limit himself or herself to three minutes. We have pre-selected speakers that have already registered, and they will speak first. None of those registered speakers requested a Spanish interpreter. However, if anybody who calls into this meeting does request a Spanish interpreter, we do have one available. And finally, I ask that each of you speak clearly in a normal voice, so our sign language interpreter can stay up with what you have to say. So now we can begin. Our first speaker will be First Ward Alderman Spata. Would you like to address the board, sir? Chairman?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right. Chairman Barclay, President Carter, to all of our guests and those listening, thank you so much for the hearing this evening. I have been, since I got here in '99, probably an everyday user of the CTA, from when I went to North Park University and lived just off of the Lawrence Brown Line stop to now as an Alderman getting to represent four different Blue Line stations and some of the best, best bus lines in the city. You take me where I need to go. There is no doubt that we have one of the most comprehensive public transportation systems in the entire country. I can say that we have one of the most accessible public transportation systems in the entire country, and we're working to even get better at that. The plan that you all have to make sure that we are taking the last of our stations that aren't accessible and making them accessible is great, including the California Blue Line Stop and the First Ward coming up next year. I'm really proud of the work that we're doing around sustainability. The plan that the CTA has for bus and bus garage electrification is brilliant. What the challenge is that we're talking about and that our residents talk about, and the challenge that I know that you are here to solve, is about reliability of service. And so one thing that every CTA user should look at is the scorecards that you put up. The scorecards are fantastic. It's the kind of transparency and honesty, even when it's challenging to put out there, that riders are looking for. So when we look at the Blue Line, for instance, we know that we're only at about 68... even going by the new schedule, folks, at about 68% of service delivered. We know that when we look at double headways, so a train being scheduled for every five minutes but arriving in 10 minutes, the Blue Line is only making about a 6% improvement on weekday services, and actually seeing 23% and 15% more double headways on Sundays and Saturdays, respectively. And I know that this is a cause of a lot of frustration and passion by Blue Line riders, by First Ward residents, because they're trying to live the same life that I want to live. They want to rely on the CTA for the daily rounds of their day, not just getting back and forth to work, but getting to the grocery store, to the doctors, to childcare. So we're relying on you all, and I know that the members of the city council, including myself, stand ready to be whatever source of support that we can, whether that's encouraging folks to apply, helping them know that the CTA is one of the best organizations that they can work for, whether that's supporting you with both the security and, I would say, the social work and clinical mental health condition needs that some of your more at-risk riders need. We're here to support you, but we need to see you doing the work to solve that reliability problem. I'm really excited to look at the January scorecard and see how these numbers that have been improved. And I will close by saying it will be one of the honors of my life in December to vote for the transit TIF that will fund the Red Line expansion and really put an end to 50 years or more of transportation injustice for far-south-side Chicagoans. Thank you so much for the time. Thank you for your service, and thank you for the improvements that I know that we're going to see.
Thank you very much, Alderman, for addressing the board. Our next speaker will be David Dahlka. Mr. Dahlka, are you there?
Hello, thank you, Greg. This is David Dahlka. I live in Jefferson Park. I first... as a first matter of order, I'd like to enter and continue the entire testimony from October 12th board meeting. While staff has reached out to me, none of those issues has been addressed. To briefly recap, the Blue Line service has not been restored to 2019 levels. As a matter of fact, it's become worse since my complaining about it at the October 12th meeting with the changes in schedule, which are an insult to riders. The '92 bus has not been restored, the smoking on trains. I hope the First Ward Alderman's still on there. We need a new ordinance to protect people from smoking on trains, and I'd like to see everything from October 12th be entered and continued in this and to get solutions for those issues. Moving onward from that, I am a little bit worried about the budget gap that I heard that's forming there for future years, and would love to hear the board's plan to address that at some point. As somebody that lives in Jefferson Park, going to the suburbs, there's a hodgepodge of part PACE, part CTA, but I challenge you to map out a route from, you know, Foster and Cicero or Foster and Central and get to the Old Orchard Shopping Center Mall in a reasonable amount of time. I think those bus routes need to be looked at being extended. I don't expect that to happen in 2023, but I'd like the board to look at having staff analyze could that be done for 2024. Extending those bus routes would serve those areas and would help employers and stokies that are desperately seeking workers in service industries. In addition, I have one last message for the board this evening. Earlier this year, you increased the president's salary by a very large amount. I don't know the exact amount, so I can't quote it. Based on the performance of the CTA this year, both in security, which is lacking, and by the way, that new security company hiring a bunch of people to stand around, look at their cell phones on a platform, that's not security. You need to do better. But I'm asking this board to rescind Mr. the president's pay increase, reactive to January 1st, 2022, based on the lack of performance here, and I, like the First Ward Alderman, like Scott Wozniak, like the 35th Ward Alderman, to see immediate results in returning Blue Line service, and I yield the balance of my time, and I wish you all a Happy New Year.
There's the problem. Thank you, Mr. Dahlka. Our next speaker is Morgan Maderan. Morgan?
Hi. Hi, this is Morgan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Morgan Maderan, and I'm a part of Commuters Take Action, and I also work at the 40th Ward Aldermanic Office. I also live in the First Ward, so thank you, Alderman Spata, for standing up for us commuters. However, I'm here today as a citizen of Chicago. I don't drive, and I rely 100% on public transit, including on my daily commute on the Western Avenue bus. The lack of public transit service the CTA has been providing is abhorrent. Chicago is the third-largest city in the country, and it is compulsory that we provide reliable public transportation to our citizens. Based on the Meeting the Moment Plan and our conversations with the CTA, it sounds like services only plan to be increased in correlation with levels of ridership. But if we never provide good service, we will never have more riders. Increasing service and building reliable transportation must come first. Furthermore, public transportation is a public good. It's a utility. Public transportation is like the library, or the post office, or schools. It's a public service that we provide in order to support the most vulnerable among us, in order for our society to function and for our city to thrive. It is not something we put on the back burner or only provide on an as-needed basis. In my dream world, we run so much service, I can simply walk out of my house without checking a transit tracker and expect to get where I need to go. As more and more people call for cities that work as an urban environment are supposed to, for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users, and for cities that are resilient in the face of climate change, we must step up and provide the level of transit service that cities around the world have been doing for decades. Chicago is behind the times. The time to wait and see is over. The lack of transit service hurts small businesses. I and so many others are trying to spend a weekend night riding around in the train, get dinner, hit up a few bars, or go to the movies, or see live music, but with wait times averaging 25 minutes for a Blue Line train on a Saturday night, many people prefer to stay home, and our local economies suffer. The lack of transit hurts students and workers, many of whom are waiting for buses or trains only to be ghosted. Many of our reports at Commuters Take Action are from people whose employment has been threatened due to the lack of service and ghost buses and trains causing them to be late. Most importantly, lack of service is impacting Chicagoans' quality of life. Folks can't get to their friends or families. We can't get to community events, to the library, to check out books, to parties and celebrations. The lack of leadership on the behalf of the CTA is preventing us from thriving and prospering in this beautiful city. We have three asks: an accurate and reliable transit tracker, transparent recruitment, hiring, and retention practices, and a detailed return-to-service plan, including measurable key performance indicators and a complete timeline. If the current CTA leadership cannot provide this, then we would like them to step down and have new leadership that understands the necessity of public transit in Chicago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maderan. Our next speaker will be Sarah Chapel-Dick. Sarah?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Sarah.
Great. Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah. I'm a resident of Albany Park. First of all, thank you so much for giving us the time to speak today. I want to say that I love the CTA. I use it all the time, and I really appreciate every public servant that is really trying to make it better. Truly, thank you. But I want to talk to you about my concerns with CTA's reliability issues and implore you to do whatever necessary to fix those issues as you're working through the budget. I've worked in low-wage service jobs in Chicago on and off for about four years. Working hours are generally not nine to five, and if you're late, you get fired. The CTA has been failing working people in Chicago now for two years. If you need to take a bus outside of rush hour, and even during rush hour a lot of the time, you better say a prayer before you leave, because your bus either isn't going to come or is going to be incredibly late. You simply can't rely on the CTA to get us to work on time anymore, when our livelihoods are on the line. I'm assuming you all appreciate the existence of service workers. If you like eating at restaurants sometimes, or getting a coffee, or basically literally anything outside of the house, then why are you failing to provide the most basic public service that these workers need to exist? I mentioned earlier that if you're late, you get fired. This means that to avoid being late, people have to leave absurdly early to account for bus delays. These people deserve sleep. They deserve time with their families. They don't deserve to leave for work two hours early. Driving isn't an option for most people, and neither is biking, especially since there's hardly any safe biking infrastructure in the city. Do you want these hard-working, exhausted people to have to leave the house two hours before their shift starts and get home two hours after their shift ends, or even more? It's despicable. I can't tell you how many times I've tried to take the '82 bus home past 9:00 PM, only to give up and walk two miles, leaving 10 or 20 clearly tired people behind me waiting. It's shameful, for the sake of Chicago's working people, that you don't have a better solution to fix reliability issues. It's shameful that there is no real acknowledgement of these issues. It's shameful that we are one of the few American cities that have infrastructure for a fully functioning transit system, and you've laundered it. If you really support service workers, or care about them at all, or care about the functionality and financial health of this city, people's enjoyment of this city, you need to fix these reliability issues. You need to stop blaming reliability on ridership and start blaming ridership on reliability. You need to stop pretending like staffing shortages are completely unfixable. Do what it takes to get the operators the support they need. If that's more money, if it's more money. If it's working with the union, I hope you have near daily meetings scheduled with them. You need to do whatever it takes. I can't sit here and tell you exactly what needs to be done. Frankly, that's not my job. That's your job, and you need to do it better. It's shameful that Dorval got such a nice raise this year, considering how bad service has been. I'm so sick of hearing officials talk and seeing absolutely no improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We need to wrap up. Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Kino Godlicher. If I pronounced that correctly, Kina?
Hello, sound check?
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Carter, my name is Kay Sabio-Gutliherre, and I'm an organizer of Commuters Take Action. First of all, I'm disappointed that the CTA meetings are still only held virtually. Perhaps the leadership is afraid of facing their much-deserved criticism in person. Just today, our org organization has received 22 complaints about late service. This is what they have to say. "From a number eight bus rider, I've had to change my AM schedule to work at work till afternoon because I cannot rely on the CTA to get me there in the morning. I pay $20 a week for the CTA. It has to spend countless cash and Uber lifts to get me there on time because the CTA was extremely late or never showed up at all. Extremely frustrating and unacceptable." End quote. A red line rider says, quote, "9:00 AM, and we've been stopped for almost half an hour now. Now I have to stay late at work to take, make my eight hours. Thanks for ruining my entire day, CTA." End quote. And lastly, a Thermoag bus driver was furious, saying, quote, "Never showed," adding an additional 33 minutes to my wait time. The bus stop here has no bench or shelter, making my wait even more uncomfortable. Not to mention, this area of the red line is exceptionally endangered. "Unacceptable." End quote. Additionally, over 530% of the buses today will be missed. That's based on the currently published schedules, the ones that CTA assured us will be updated to match available staff in the Meeting the Moment Plan. The pandemic has been with us for over two years. Does it really take that long to align schedules of this available workforce? I think not. At Commuters Take Action, we have analyzed the Blue Line service data of the past several months and produced a more accurate schedule...
Can the speaker please slow down for the court reporter?
Sure. Sorry about that. At Commuters Take Action, we have analyzed Blue Line service data of the past several months and produced a more accurate schedule in one afternoon. A more modern, data-driven approach is sorely needed. All this is a human impact of effective, unscheduled, erroneous efforts by the CTA to trick riders into thinking they are fixing service. There has been no measured improvement to service quality this year. President Carter, you have failed, both in meeting the moment and assuming that we wouldn't notice. They will continue to notice tonight. In the proposed 2023 budget, we commend the CTA for including new HR and training positions. It's imperative that both departments, overworked and under-resourced, are made first priority in hiring, which will allow the agency to be able to hire more operators effectively. It is nothing short of strange that the CTA has been unable to fill both bus and train operator positions, but was able to come up with hundreds of unarmed security guards almost overnight. Perhaps this money would have been better spent on... Perhaps this money would have been better spent on treating your operators right. And it should be obvious that it is much easier to retain a current employee than to hire a new one. I hope you will take a closer look at why your operators are leaving in a month. To that end, we need you to look forward. If the operator shortages be, uh, resolved by the beginning of next year, uh, what's next? Will this new class of operators soon leave just like their predecessors?
Kino, we need to wrap, we need to wrap up, Kino. I want to thank you very much for addressing the board. Thank you.
Okay.
Our next speaker will be Bruce Mainzer. Bruce, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you, Bruce.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Bruce Mainzer, um, and I have a residence in River North. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the FY23 capital plan. I am a former transit executive who worked for the RTA, the Illinois DOT and MTA in New York. I am vice chair of the Chicago Metro Chapter of the Climate Reality Project. Over the past two years, the Chicago chapter of the Climate Reality Project has been focused on encouraging the region's transit operators to electrify their bus fleets. To date, we are discouraged by CTA's lack of progress. CTA was a leader in 2014 when it tested the first electric bus in revenue service. But now, CTA is falling considerably behind other transit systems in electrifying its fleet. As an example, in the first competitive funding opportunity from the FTA under the new Infrastructure Act, 1.6 billion was made available to the nation's transit agencies to ramp up bus electrification. LA got 104 million to buy 160 electric buses. Boston's MBTA is receiving 116 million to buy electric buses to replace older diesel buses. And New York also got 160 million to buy 230 electric buses. But CTA only asked for 29 million to buy only 10 electric buses and upgrade to a garage. In the current five-year capital plan, there's hardly a mention of how many electric buses will be ordered. There are no tables of how many electric buses will be procured in each year as a standard in a capital plan. So to determine what CTA's real plans are, I had to file a Freedom of Information Act request to obtain the CTA Bus Fleet Management Plan. This plan was finally issued to me just Tuesday after considerable delay. From that document, I determined that between 23 and FY26, CTA is planning on ordering only 140 60-foot electric buses and 57 standard-sized electric buses, while still proceeding on getting 500 new diesel buses after receiving 100 diesel buses this year. It appears that CTA is reluctant to embrace electric buses. Compare Los Angeles' plan to electrify its entire fleet by 2030. Um, LA will start purchasing 150 electric buses in 2024 and in subsequent years, it will increase purchases to 450 electric buses each year. By 2030, their entire full fleet will be electric. New York MTA has programmed 1.1 billion to buy 500 electric buses. CTA has not been transparent about its electrification plan and throws up numerous excuses as to why it's supposedly hampered compared to other transit systems in electrifying its fleet. In the charging forward plan that CTA issued in February, CTA claims that their old and obsolete garages are inhibiting its ability to take on more electric vehicles. But CTA is taking too long to retrofit its garages by not being willing to manage more than one garage redesigned at a time as other transit agencies seem to be doing.
Excuse me, Bruce, we have to wrap up pretty soon. Bruce, we have to wrap up.
Okay. Okay, I'll, one last paragraph. CTA appears not to want to join the rest of the transit community to electrify its fleet. The time for delay has ended. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Our next speaker will be Jane Goldenberg. Jane, are you there? Jane?
Hi, yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jane. Please address the board.
Okay, hi, um, I am a resident of the Lakeview neighborhood and I also want to thank you for the opportunity to comment today. I moved to Chicago for a multitude of reasons, including its wonderful public transit system. As someone who cares about preserving a livable world at a time when climate change threatens this for our children and grandchildren, I've been disappointed to see how few environmental policies are an integral part of CTA operations. For example, I found it shocking how long diesel buses will idle in place in front of the Pecky Nordabart Nature Museum, clogging up the air in Lincoln Park with toxic fumes. Now the CTA, as Bruce has said, has announced plans to buy 500 new diesel buses, which would constitute one-third of its bus fleet. This is retrogressive, especially given the stated CTA goal to get to a zero emission bus fleet by 2040. CTA buses have a disproportionate impact on our air quality, while the CTA's bus fleet consists of less than 0.1% of all vehicles registered in the city of Chicago. It emits 3% of greenhouse gas emissions of all on-road vehicles. So much for climate promises or public health. The CTA's current five-year capital plan indicates that it will order only around 200 additional electric buses over that five-year period. Less than half the number of diesel buses. If the CTA even hopes to achieve its goal, it needs to do much better. The stated reason that the CTA does not have the charging capacity can be overcome. The analysis of the Climate Reality Project shows that the garages at 103rd and Chicago Avenue will be ready to accept electric buses in the next three years, according to the Chicago Forward Plan. And the capacity will be 556 buses. Another option would be en route chargers on main routes like Chicago Avenue. Plus, all of this new federal money available to help transit agencies transition to electric buses, as Bruce says, um, there is a lot of money available and other cities are moving on this while Chicago is faltering. Transit agencies in Boston and New York receive far more money than Chicago this round. Uh, and why? We need to get moving to get our fair share of federal dollars to help us transition one of the great public transit systems in the country. Other cities, like Los Angeles, as Bruce said, is, I have already, are pushing for full transition by 2030. Why is our city stuck in the last century? There is no excuse. I ask that you please expedite plans to electrify our bus fleet for the sake of our climate and our health. And what, and reliability is also important, I can hear, and I've experienced it myself, but both things are possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Goldenberg. Our next speaker is Emmy Lynn Yamouchi. Emmy Lynn, are you there? Ms. Yamouchi, are you there? Can you hear, can you hear me?
Are you looking to speak with Eric Slater? He's definitely unmuted.
Okay, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Emmy Lynn, is that you?
This is Emmy Yamouchi.
I can't take that down with the V.
I don't, Herb, I don't think, I think we have to reconnect with her, Herb. Herb, we have to cut, we have to reconnect with her. We cannot hear her or understand her.
So she's connected twice. She's, she's dialed in and on the PC, so that she's got two. I just muted her other lines. Emmy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Um, start speaking, Ms. Emmy Lynn. Let's see if we can hear you clearly.
Uh, okay. Do you want me to log out of one or the other?
No.
Yes. Hi, you've got two, two entries. Can you just disconnect one of them?
Hello? Hello?
Hello. Emmy, Emmy Lynn? No, we cannot, we're getting interference, Emmy Lynn.
Goodbye.
Herb, I think we have to move on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Try it once again.
Sorry, okay. So my name's Emmy Yamouchi. Just by way of background, I normally use bus routes 97 and 22 and sporadically 81, 49B, 54A and 92. And I also am a frequent user of the yellow and red lines. Um, I appreciate this opportunity to share my concerns regarding the budget priorities. My main concerns are safety, the driver's knowledge and cleanliness. For safety, we really need better cameras, better lighting at the stations and at the bus stops themselves. Um, I don't know what you can do about the horrible odor of weed that just permeates every single car on the red line, no matter what time of day or night. And now that it's winter, or it's heading into winter and heat's going to be on, that smell is just unbearable. Secondly, security. I agree with the gentleman earlier who said we really need security officers who are walking around and paying attention to what is going on on the platform. The drivers, especially of the CTA buses, their reliance on the automated system for route stops almost makes it impossible for them to even know what the stops are. So that if you get on a bus that you're not familiar with the stops and you ask the bus driver, "Do you stop at such and such?", he or she usually doesn't know. And it's a very uncomfortable feeling to be on a bus riding for 20, 30 minutes and just hoping that stop is going to appear on the automated system. Lastly, about cleanliness. The Howard Station is disgusting. It is filthy, the litter, the pigeon poop everywhere, the urine smell everywhere, the elevator to the parking area, the stairs to the parking area. It is awful, regardless of the season. Also, the stop at Addison Street, the elevator there is frequently out of service. And since I go to a lot of, um, baseball games there, I often see folks in wheelchairs or with walkers who, you know, the elevator might have been working when they arrived at the ballpark, but going home, they've got no way to get up to the platform other than the elevator and the elevator is not in service. And when you ask the CTA employees there for assistance, they just tell you, "Well, we called, but they probably won't come until tomorrow." So I really would encourage you to be better on top of your maintenance issues and the equipment failures. That being said, I also spend a lot of time in Washington DC and believe me, they've got a lot bigger problems.
Excuse me, Emmy Lynn, we need to wrap up.
So thank you. Nope, that's it. Thank you. I just wanted to air those concerns. I do appreciate everything that you guys do. I know it's a tough job, but we really do need more reliable, safe and cleaner transportation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Yamouchi. Um, our next speaker will be Eric Slater. Eric, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Eric.
Okay. Nearly every month, we become aware of one of our coworkers who is assaulted while at work as the frontline transit workers at CTA in PACE. This vastly undercounts the nearly daily verbal assault and threats from, from frontline, to frontline transit workers. The people of Chicago need safe public transit, which requires workers to be respected. Squeezing more work out of our current workers makes things worse. Instead, we need to expand public transportation to the communities that need it most, hire, rehire the many hundreds of unjustly fired workers and open up good union jobs for thousands of working people. Your budget falsely claims that there aren't enough transit workers for, for people willing to do this work. Firstly, this is caused because management treats workers so poorly. Additionally, public transit is being deliberately abandoned in order to defund it and claim that nobody is riding it and thereby justify further defunding it. In addition to privatization, this is what these kinds of budgets have done to many of our public needs, such as schools, parks, healthcare, et cetera. Does public transit really need long unpaid swing shifts? It didn't need it in Chicago 30 to 70 years ago. Do the people of Chicago region really need managers and private investigators and whole floors of lawyers going after workers for simply trying to get an unpaid day off from the extreme stress and danger of our work? What many passengers do not know yet is the hidden war against transit workers by appointed managers, administrators and lawyers. They treat us like children or criminals. There's no legitimate reason to organize the work along these dangerous and antagonistic lines. In my 17 years as a CTA bus operator and eight years in the trenches defending my coworkers as their elected union shop steward, I have found that almost all of the punishment your appointed managers and labor relations departments meet out against my coworkers has nothing to do with safe or courteous operations. Almost all of it relates to short-term cost-cutting measures that actually cost the people of Chicago much, much more. For us workers and retirees, it tears our bodies apart. It causes so much unneeded stress. It doesn't need to be this way. The people of Chicago need to look to the workers to solve these problems. We are the leaders of families and communities. We know the streets. We know the people and we are very good at what we do. We are the experts of public transportation. Workers and passengers should be making much more of the decisions, including these transit budgets and even those who lead these organizations. After some victories building our confidence and citywide coordination, the role of the frontline transit worker can begin to return to the natural leader in the population. Much of the violence currently directed against us can thus be turned into positive struggle to improve millions of working people's and students' lives. Give workers the space and respect to do this needed work. Through greater worker leadership and control, public transit in the Chicago region can become a positive example to the world. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you very much, Eric. Our next speaker is Cynthia Linton. Cynthia, are you there? Cynthia? Cynthia, are you there? Herb, do we have her on the line?
She's on the line, just, uh, asking her to unmute. Press star six.
Hello?
Yes, Cynthia?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please address the board.
Okay, good. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Cynthia Linton and I'm a grandmother who lives in Streeterville. I've been concerned about climate change since I first learned about it 15 years ago. And I am increasingly alarmed as the United States and the world keeps falling further behind in meeting their climate warming goals. At the current COP27 climate meeting, the UN Secretary General warned, "We are on the road to climate hell and our foot is on the accelerator." The future threatens to bring us more and more devastating heat waves, droughts, floods, fires and rising seas. So we all must put on the brakes, um, as far as using fossil fuels and that includes city transit systems. Clean energy buses in a program to encourage mass transit, biking and walking can help get people out of their cars. We all need to pitch in to make this rapid change. I myself am spending less time in my car and more walking and taking the bus. And if I were to buy a new car, it would definitely be electric. I now have a 15-year-old hybrid. I'm concerned the CTA doesn't see the emergency for what it is and isn't being aggressive enough in electrifying its buses. Some other cities are doing much better. Seattle and Austin are ending purchase of diesel buses now and so is our suburban PACE system. Los Angeles and New York, which have been mentioned by previous, uh, in previous testimony, are ramping up their purchase of electrics with LA committing to electrifying its whole fleet by 2030. New York plans to order 520 buses from fiscal year 2023 to '26, while the CTA plans call for just 197 in the same time period. The CTA number also is very small compared with the 500 new diesels and 800, 880 overhaul diesels in its plan. Both LA and New York City are also planning to install charging infrastructure quickly at multiple locations. CTA is simply acting too timidly. There is significant federal money available for electrification now, so CTA should be doing more now. In the recent round of federal infrastructure funds given out this year, New York City and LA asked for and received more than $100 million each.
Ms. Linton, we need to wrap up, but I want to thank you very much for addressing the board. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Scott Reed. Scott, are you there? Scott? Mr. Reed?
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Scott. Please address the board.
Okay, thank you. I'm Scott Reed. I'm a retired CPS teacher and I've been riding CTA for a long time I'm a retired CPS teacher, and I've been riding CTA for a long time, and I've had some bad days, but much more good days. Thanks for the opportunity. You're planning on buying 500 diesel buses, and they'll be on our streets, I guess, an average of 15 years. And 20 years ago, I would have said, great, you know, new buses. But I've become thoroughly schooled in how much damage has been and continues to be done from burning things for our energy. Let me say this with utmost respect. If the decision-makers in CTA are going to actually sign contracts to put 500 more fossil fuel buses on the streets for another 15 years, then those decision-makers haven't fully come to terms with the fact that doing this is making an unfolding catastrophe worse. Or maybe our reckoning with the catastrophe hasn't even occurred. Because you come to, once you come to terms with this reality, buying 500 more fossil fuel burning buses becomes absurd. I'll admit, the board members and many, many more folks could talk circles around me about the challenges faced getting infrastructure in place to go electric more quickly. But the infrastructure isn't the real problem. Your real problem is the same as my problem. It's the same as everybody's problems. We have to stop burning stuff for our energy needs, and you are in a unique position to make things much, much better or much, much worse. We know you aren't magicians. I've read your bios posted on the website. I have absolute confidence you possess the talent and ability, along with the moral capacity, to abandon the plan to buy 500 polluting buses. Please, don't avoid the hard reality of our predicament with comforting data about lowered emissions. That's like saying, well, I'll start smoking Marlboro Lights instead of Camel nonfilters. We're way past the point of lowered emissions making any significant difference. Other large cities are leaving Chicago behind in the race to electrification. Federal money is available to speed up this difficult transition. The talent is out there to guide you to do this differently. What's the holdup in Chicago? Our planet is heating up mainly because of CO2 emissions. This heating is resulting in weather catastrophes that are only gonna get worse. So we have to stop emitting CO2 as fast as we can. In response, the CTA really shouldn't be buying 500 diesel buses, especially when you don't have to. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Our next speaker is Kendrick Jones. Kendrick, are you there? Mr. Jones? Herb, you have him on the line?
He's online.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Jones. Please address the board.
Hi, yes. Good evening, board. I would like to talk about the meeting in the moment plan in which your last pillar on your plan is invest in employees. I would hope that that's an honest statement, but some of the things that some of the employees have explained to me would differ from that plan. So I would hope that with this new budget proposal, that you would invest in bathrooms for employees. Most some of the lines don't even have a bathroom at the end of the line, and 2022, that shouldn't be. So I would hope that you guys will look into getting bathrooms, not porta potties, breaking mortar bathrooms for employees at the end of these bus lines. It shouldn't be that hard to build a bathroom in 2022. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Our next speaker is, if I pronounce this correctly, Sharif Husani?
Greg, that caller dropped.
That caller dropped.
So that's the last of the blue callers. We had two green callers, if you wanted to go into those.
Do you have them on the line?
Yes.
Is it Jacob and Garland?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let's go to them.
The first caller is a 515 area code.
That would be Garland at 515. Garland?
Yes, thanks. Yes, Greg, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Garland. Please address the board.
All right. Good evening, everybody. How you doing, Chairman Barkley, President Carter, and the rest of the CTA board members? How you doing?
We're all doing great, Garland. Thank you.
All right. I'm Garland Armstrong, former CTA ADA advisory committee member, used to live in Displayings, Illinois, now living in Des Moines, Iowa. I just wanna, I just wanna, I'm just deeply concerned. I just wanna ask your opinion. Well, when you have those new electric buses up and running, if there are some passengers who are non-disabled or disabled on the electric buses, and then there's a fire on there, will the CTA and the Chicago Fire Department have a program working together to make sure where the location of the electric buses, on which route, and the location that where the fire started, like, you know, underneath where, underneath where the engines, where the wheels are? Because if that happens like down the road, how will CTA and the Chicago Fire Department be able to have a program up and running, working together on it, so that in future times that y'all could be extremely well-prepared and show a program like this to every Chicagoan? So if they're riding on it, even the bus operators too? Because I heard about this when I was, yesterday at the, I was watching Pace board meeting, one of the directors brought that up, and I would like to know if CTA will be able to have a program like that, working with the Chicago Fire Department? If there's gonna be a fire on the new electric buses down the road, or test it just to make sure that they are well-prepared and safety is an issue, because the passengers and the bus operators is depending on y'all? So I just wanna know, will you be able to have that program down the road or not? Because everyone, if everyone feel like they're catching up on it, and I think CTA needs to catch up on it. So when will they start it? And how, and how long, how long is it gonna be?
Garland, that's a very good question that I'm not sure we've all thought it through so far at this point, but we will certainly get back to you, and we will look into that. So thank you very much for bringing this up. Thank you. But we can't answer that tonight.
All right, because, yeah, because, so y'all could be, so y'all can, so since Pace asked that good question, maybe y'all should use that idea from them and see how y'all could use the implementing that program? Because I think down the road, because y'all could test it out and see how they could do it, not only where you are at, but maybe take it nationwide, so people will see how to be well-prepared if a fire is happening on the buses.
Oh, and thank you so much for bringing that up.
And maybe on the trains, too.
Thank you, Garland, very much for bringing that up, and thanks for calling in from Des Moines, and give our best to Heather. And thank you very much for staying.
And her birthday is coming up on Tuesday.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Garland. Our next speaker, I believe, maybe, is it Jacob Arnoff? I'm not sure. Herb?
Yes, he's online, he's unmuted.
Okay, Jacob, you want to address the board, please?
Okay, hi, Jacob Aronoff. Live on the northwest side of Chicago. I've been riding CTA for many years. Thank you for this hearing. What do I say? First of all, electric buses, I know there's a need to move towards electric buses, but be glad that they're, be glad that they're buses at all, because if the bus, if the bus fleet wasn't there, traffic congestion would get so high that that in itself would cause more pollution. About, now, there was a previous speaker from Jefferson Park. You have to return, when you, when CTA remodeled the bus terminal at Jefferson Park many years ago, several years ago, there used to be a bus tracker system at, at one of the warming stations. That was removed when the whole bus terminal was remodeled. Please return the bus tracker so that people can have an idea as to when their buses are coming. Same with the Lawrence Avenue Station. There used to be a bus tracker there on the wall on the north side of the, north side of the street, across the street from the Red Line Station there. You need to return that, too, although I understand that the Lawrence Avenue Station is under, is under reconstruction as part of the Red Line reconstruction project. Crime on the CTA has gone up. There have been several incidents. They've been reported on the news, et cetera. There was a stabbing the other day, I believe at the North and Clyburn Station. I don't know what time of day that was. You need to do, you need to do a better job of providing security for riders and for bus drivers. Otherwise, people will, otherwise ridership will continue to go down. You need to increase ridership, and that's not going to happen that way. You also need to increase the frequency of trains and buses so that people, so that system is more reliable, so that people don't have to wait, wait for work, to get to and from work, et cetera. Safety is a big problem, and you need to address that with the Chicago City Council. I know Mr. Carter spoke yesterday before the Transportation Committee of the Chicago City Council, and, and there needs to be more accountability there.
Jacob, thank you very much for addressing the board. We appreciate it, and we're going to move on to our next speaker.
One, one other comment, please, if you could, if you could send me a copy of the budget and writing, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we did, Jacob. Maybe it just didn't get there. We'll get you another one, okay? Thanks, Jacob.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Our next speaker, will be the last one at this point, is John Cavallounis. John, are you there? Herb, we have John?
Yes, I am.
Oh, hi, John. Please address the board.
Yes. Hello, I'm John Cavallounis, and I'm a lifetime Chicago and Chicago-area resident, and...
John, are you still there?
He got muted. He'll unmute. Press star six, please.
I just did again.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
We can hear you.
I'm a lifelong Chicago, Chicago-area resident and a regular metro and CTA user, predominantly in the downtown area. I care very much about our collective health and natural environment, and believe we have the technology to improve them both. We need the political will and commitment. To that end, I have been, become active in the Climate Reality Project in the Chicago Chapter, and am concerned, as others have mentioned, about electrification. I agree that public transit and biking are two of the best alternatives to using gas-powered cars, and I'm pleased that both Pace and CTA have committed to zero emission fleet by 2040. Pace has taken immediate steps in that direction, but I believe the CTA has been lacking. The budget is still planning to go forward with buying 500 more diesel buses, representing close to a third of your fleet. In your charging forward plan, you point out that the newest CTA diesel buses are more fuel-efficient compared to older buses they will replace. That's not the right comparison. It should be to electric buses, not to older diesel buses. E-buses emit no CO2, no nitric oxide, and no particulate matter. Given the climate crisis, we cannot settle for incremental improvements in emissions. We need to eliminate them. You also state in charging forward that one of the barriers you face is the lack of e-bus manufacturing capacity and the availability of semiconductor chips. This faces all cities and their systems, but it has not stopped other major cities from ordering large number of electric buses now. Why are you letting these other cities like New York, Boston, and LA leap ahead and receive the electric buses that could be coming to Chicago? Especially with the new federal funding that is available, the CTA should be stepping up right now for this funding. You were a leader back in 2014 when you began testing electric buses, but now lagging behind. CTA, I believe you can do better, and I'm asking you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. That concludes all the speakers who are preregistered and spoken for now. We've called in. We're gonna take a short break to see if anybody else wishes to call in and address the board. Thank you. Thank you.